Good evening, everyone. The time is now six P M. And this board of commissioners work session meeting is now called to order. I do ask that you silence all of your cell phones and please keep our conversations to the absolute minimum. And I would like to invite Co-Pastor Thomas to the podium to lead us in our invocation of litigations. Please stand, to you two.
Questions, everybody. You're so wonderful and so kind. You are the author and finisher of our faith. Father, I pray for this board of commissioners, oh God, that you will continue to bless them, not just them, God, but bless their children, oh God. Protect them and keep them safe, oh God. I pray that you will encourage them, God. Help them to work together and get on one accord, God. God, I pray for our police department, oh God, our chief, God. God, that you will bless him and his family, God. Remember his children, God. The fire department, our community, oh Lord. God, we need your help, oh God. We make you welcome to come into the city of Spring Lake, oh God. And be that present and help for us, God, in our time of need, oh God. We come against every stronghold and every plan of the enemy, God, that tries to breed a vision amongst this city, oh God. God, we give your name all the praise and all the glory because we realize without a doubt you alone are worthy to be praised. And we yet just tell you thank you, God, for all things, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Thomas. Could you tell us which church you're with? I don't think you've been up here before. Pray with them.
House of Grace News, we are right here with men, yes, the road.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for having me.
All right, we will now move on to additions and deletions. Uh, I would like for us to add attorney-client privilege to our closed session. This one is N C G S one four three three one eight eleven eight two. Personnel or suspended personnel, attorney-client privilege. Um, Mayor President. Your second, Commissioner Thompson.
I'm second.
Any discussions? All in favor? Uh, all right, motion carries and we will add attorney-client privileges to our closed session. All right, I need a motion to approve, Agent. Commissioner Posios.
So moved.
Commissioner Chetwick.
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion carries. Um, approval of the consent items, draft minutes of the January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting, our quarterly report, report two, code enforcement reports for October, November, and December, and community appearance and sustainability committee applications to appoint Ms. Wilt and to appoint Taryn Townsend. Commissioner Thompson.
So moved.
Um, Commissioner Chetwick.
I second.
Any discussion, Commissioner Posios.
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome, everybody. We have Ms. Wilt, who currently serves as the chairperson on our appearance committee, and we have next to her Ms. Taryn Townsend, who's been a longtime resident of Spring Lake. And I know her personally. I'm very excited to have her on this committee. She is dedicated and she's a worker. So she'll do us all very well. We also will still have one vacancy on that committee. That person can also be a business owner in the town. So, thank you, Mayor.
I'd also want to commend Ms. Wilt for, again, society are coming to rejoin the committee, the committee to service again. Um, you've done a phenomenal job with the, with the committee. So thank you for your service and we look forward to having you, Sarah. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Now move on to our public comments. And I'd like to invite Ms. Big Samper to podium. Uh, just remember that you only have three minutes for speaking. I know you already have.
Thanks the Lord, everybody. God is good. Bless all of you. Well, some of these things that I'm bringing to you, you've heard me say before, and I want us to get on board with it because a lot of the people in the community, even the children, want these things. And I'm gonna just read them off to you. And then one is the bowling alley. And it's update the rec center. You know, everybody got real nice rec centers and our rec center is kinda down low. Okay? Um, open up early. You want them to open up early, the rec center. You wanna move it there. You see, the thing about when I'm asking this is because everything goes to bed, Bill. When I get ready to take, um, my great-granddaughter to something, I always have to go to bed there for. You know, we should have something here. You know, a nice rec center. You know, we should have a Y M C A here. We should have a bowling alley. These things we should have in the community instead of going to bed, build everything. It is sickening. You know, you're talking to a seventy-nine-year-old lady and with a fourteen-year-old great-granddaughter. You see what I'm saying? So, uh, and the other thing is, um, nice restaurants here. We got all these old places and, and all this stuff running around here. We need a nice, we need nice restaurants. Let's get, see if we can get Chick-fil-A up in here. Get some other places up in here. Um, when you're first coming into Spring Lake, right at eighty-seven and, and, uh, two-ten, get that chalk up there. Ever since that weather went bad, that chalk was right up there, fell down, and now somebody has taped it up. We need to get rid of that. We need to get rid of, we need to get rid of that little white house that's sitting on the corner right across from it. Uh, the other thing is, um, trash cans in the community. Everybody leave their trash cans outside in the front. We need, and the other thing is the cars. Some people have four or five cars parked in their, in their yard, not the driveway, but in their yard. And we need to get rid of that. It just brings the neighborhood down. You understand what I'm saying to you? Um, okay, one more minute. Coming down Main Street, that post is hitting up against wires. We need to get that taken care of. The other thing is over on Chapel Hill Road where they're supposed to be building something there behind William Chapel. There's a tree that's hanging over like this. That tree is gonna eventually fall. And I hope it doesn't fall on anybody because that is a well-traveled road. You don't understand what I'm saying to you? All right. And the other thing is, um, let me see if I have anything else. All these old buildings on eighty-seven, they need to either be fixed up or torn down, one or the other. That's what needs to be done. Zero, okay. Y'all heard what I said, and why? As long as you see something done with all of this. You understand what I'm saying, Town Manager?
Okay, Ms. Samper.
Okay. Me no Chris mouth, but I hear you.
I'll be glad to talk to you after the meeting.
Okay.
All right, we do not have any presentations today, so we will move on to our new basis, which is our budget amendment twelve. Mr. Alton.
If you have a copy of the budget amendment twelve, uh, several months ago, we sold, uh, a few police cars. We received twenty thousand, six hundred dollars for the sale of those cars. And the police department would like to, uh, take the sale of that money, put it back in their budget, uh, twenty thousand. Uh, the police department also received another five hundred dollars in donations from our citizens to help pay for the toys that they passed out at Christmas. Um, and then the last one, uh, the cause of the, uh, incident at Plush, uh, and, uh, the legal fees we spent to shut that, uh, business down. Uh, we have spent most of our, with our legal fees above the retainer. So, uh, we have five thousand in miscellaneous income. I would like to add that to the legal fees and the rest of these amendments are just to move a little money around within each bar.
I would say a motion to approve the budget amendment. Mayor President.
Um, I'll say so moved.
Commissioner Chetwick.
I second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Cool, that slide.
We're gonna go on to your financial report.
This, this, this is just a short, uh, thing that I want to ask you to bring to your attention.
Perfect.
Okay. Um, you will see on your financial report that our tax collection was only about fifty percent. That's as of December thirty-first. This is as of today. Um, your property taxes are due on January the sixth without penalty and interest. After that, they, they start adding interest, uh, for late payment. Oh, we received eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars on the last day, January the sixth. So as of right now, our, this slide is litter control. Go to the next one. Our, on property taxes, as of today, we have collected two point eight million out of the levy of three, three million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand. Oh, we're right at ninety-one percent collected. Um, there are still nine percent in receiving. Now, we have, you would like to see that percentage be up to ninety-seven, ninety-eight. We still have five months to get there. However, just wanted to caution you that, um, for next year's budget, we can only budget the property value times the tax rate times this year's collection percentage. Okay? Ninety-one is not good, but again, we still have five months of late collections to get that up. But say it only gets up to ninety-five, then we can only budget ninety-five percent of our levy for next year. Um, but again, that's a lot better than it was a month ago. Okay? Well, we have a lot of people paying the last minute.
Jimmy, what's this year's budget based on? Collection percentage or current budget?
I think about ninety-five or ninety-six, somewhere in that neighborhood.
So if it's, if it's based on ninety-six and we only collect ninety-three, the next year's budget, you'll have to be budgeting a three percent reduction in capital.
Yes, it would.
So, um, historically, I thought we were, we would average around ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent.
That is, you would, but that's by the end of June.
Okay.
Okay? So, we, we're at ninety-one, we're just at, that's through January the fifteenth. Okay? So it's going to get better. And, um, I ex, I fully expect it to be ninety-six or ninety-seven. We're just cautioning you that if it's not, we have to lower our percentage next year's budget. Go back to the other slide. Uh, Ms. Blackman, you will be interested in, in this. On our, uh, our garbage fee each year is three hundred and ninety-six dollars. That is made up of three hundred and eighty-four dollars for garbage collection plus a twelve dollar, one dollar a month litter control fee. Okay? So far this year in the litter, litter control fee, we have collected twenty-one thousand. Uh, we budgeted, uh, about twenty-two thousand. So we've collected ninety-six percent of what we budgeted. That's seventeen hundred and sixty customers at twelve dollars each. So we've collected all, all of that fee. You have also in your budget twenty thousand dollars to expand for litter control. So far, we have not spent much of that money. Okay? But just wanna let you know how much we have collected.
That's housed under the appearance.
Right.
So you just appointed two members to that on this slide.
So you have twenty thousand in the budget and you've collected twenty-one thousand in revenue to spend on litter control. So.
Commissioner Posios has a question.
Yeah, so the obvious question is, how do we use that money, Jimmy?
That is.
He's been using his own money this whole time for these three, three-some years.
Okay. Well, um, you can use it to pay somebody to pick up the trash. You can use it for tipping fees.
Supplies.
Yeah, supplies. Okay, those, then you buy a bunch of, um, little grabbers to pick stuff up, you know, you can reimburse those.
Coffee doughnuts.
Um, yeah, you could probably spend it, you know, for, for meals for those people that come out and volunteer, you know, at least a meal lunch, they're gonna work all kind of big on trash.
So the appearance committee, uh, was budgeting fifteen hundred dollars, uh, just like the military head of the fair committee. And so this is another twenty thousand on top of that, right? That we were expecting.
We'll try, we'll buy the hook for the dollar.
Well, we didn't, uh, I don't think there was any discussion about exactly how we were gonna use that money when we raised the. Uh, other than, so we just.
There was enough litter if you could spend it all.
Yeah, well, with the police. That's been a blessing.
Uh, we, we've been doing some math, right? And so there's a particular piece of property that people talk about. Um, you've even heard some comments tonight about buildings and dilapidated structures and litter and all the different things that impact the town of Spring Lake. In one particular case, we estimate the daily expense to clean up an illegal dump site to be close to around five thousand dollars a day. So now we're telling you that we've collected twelve dollars per resident for litter control fee that generates roughly twenty-one thousand dollars a year that we could spend over the course of four days.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So, um, you can buy a whole bunch of the grabbers.
Doughnuts, maybe.
You can buy a whole bunch of, uh, bags. But what we've done is established a budget to deal with this, this problem across our entire community. It's not a lot, but it's a start. And so, um, everybody's gonna have to pick up and pay to clean this stuff up. Um, and when you look at it that way, it, it doesn't go far. So for the little things, I would rather use it, this is me talking, um, not to go fifteen hundred dollars and add another twenty-one thousand dollars, making that twenty-three, whatever. Um, but now back away, now you have a revenue source for the appearance commission and that budget is twenty-one thousand dollars.
So I thought that money, so that doesn't go to the sanitation fund?
No, it does not. It's, it's collected through sanitation, but it's moved over into the, uh, general fund.
Just, I think that line is in the.
Sanitation.
It is in the sanitation fund.
But you can touch it. What's that? You can still appeal against it.
Yeah, but it is in the sanitation fund, the twenty thousand expense. The apparent, the fifteen hundred dollars for the appearance commission is in the general fund.
Yeah.
The twenty thousand for this is in Fund sixty-six.
Okay. That's why he's a body expert. He remembers Fund sixty-six, it's that and the other.
So just for the sake of how we would use that twenty thousand dollars, should we be able to get it where it needs to be? Uh, would that be say, um, we, would we pay police to come out and block the streets off in streets to use their equipment? Is that, did that cost or how?
Police always are in the general.
So I'm saying, would it, would it, if we were, the appearance committee wanted to do a town cleanup and we wanted to block off a certain area with the funds, so that would, that money still would.
I would not recommend using these funds to pay police officers' salaries and block off a road. If you wanted to use these funds to have a roll-off established.
Okay. That, that's what I, that's what I was trying to get my, an idea around how they could spend this money.
Yeah. So paper shred, okay. Do we do that to, so what are our town cleanups with paper shred? Will that cost a lot of money to have somebody come out there and do that? So that would be, we love it.
Yeah, that, that's one possible use, the trash bags, the tipping fees. Yeah. To carry it to the landfill. All of those things would be right now. Because they would be directly related to picking up and disposing of the trash.
Clean up the Saturday? And so I think we'd be able to same time as the light off the, the terms of our collection or whatever. Um, there, there's expenses associated with that. So to that, to that, um, I would, I would be honest, to be honest with you, spending a few bucks on doughnuts for ten dollars a year, I'd do it every day. Every day. So, and I think that would be appropriate.
I'll sign tomorrow.
Believe it or not.
Commissioner Posios, raise your voice. Okay. Uh, Mayor President.
Yes, I wanted to go back to the, um, taxes that, our property taxes that were in. You said a big portion of the came in when?
January the sixth, the very last day.
Did it come in or was it held by the county and sent?
The county sends us the money probably about twice a month. That was what came in that day, eight hundred and ninety thousand.
Wow.
We got a check from the county for the first two weeks of January of one point two million. Now, some of that was garbage fees and some of it was stormwater fees. About a million dollars of it was property taxes. But almost nine hundred thousand, eight hundred eighty-nine, eight hundred ninety thousand was collected in one day, the last day to pay without visiting.
All right, I just, I just wondered, you know, this is something that's so sticky for me, is how long is the county holding on to our money?
They're sending us a check about every two weeks, on average, twice a month.
But it's had a matter, it wasn't coming that frequently before, was it?
No. No, there, there, I mean, there are some counties that only pay once a month, which means they're, they're paying more often than that. Now, the one thing that does come once a month is the motor vehicle taxes from D and V. But that's, that's every county pays that way. They just pay it once a month. Uh, they just pay it two months behind, but they pay it once a month.
Yeah, I just think we need to establish a definite schedule because I remember the contract we signed, there was no specific schedule and I still think we need to revisit that and say, we need a schedule, no matter how much cost.
Well, what, what I would suggest is this, in the summer months, you collect very little in property taxes. Twice a month, I think would be sufficient, but you're not coming out a whole lot of money. And it's a monthly, once a month. But in the fall through January, I'd like, I'd kinda like to see it weekly.
Yeah, I agree.
And we're talking?
So one of the things, this is for residents out there, a, as we look to do our, our cleanups and if your area needs, needs some, some tender loving care, uh, we're gonna work with you. And if you could organize a small little group that wants to clean up your neighborhoods, uh, we've got the grabbers, we've got the bags, we've got the, the resources to bring those items and clean up your area. Uh, instead of waiting for us to do that for you, uh, this is a volunteer group that, that we do. Um, if you would like to participate and do that, we're, we're here to, to work with you. We want the whole town to be cleaning. Uh, and you can put some sweat equity into it, in your area and look, look very, very good. So, um, that's the tires, that's the litter, that's the illegal dump sites. Uh, as long as it's on, not private property, it's in the right of way, that we, we're glad to come out there and work with you and clean that up. We started splitting off into zones so that we can go there and work in areas within town. So, uh, that is there and we look forward to the participation.
Uh, Mayor President.
Yes, I did have another thing. Don't forget, we do have the app and you can, uh, report something that you think needs taking care of. All you have to do is hold up and, um, file a request and they'll pick up the addresses over here in the area. And you can say what it is and it will take a picture for you. So use the app and you can use it in your community. If you feel like there's too many callers on this one app, take a picture. And it goes over to, um, to Chief German and to the community. So help, uh, help you to do that.
Commissioner Chetwick.
I just wanted to say to, um, Marvin, we talked to the schools, I know about the National Bay Club, they have to do community hours and a lot of times students are looking for ways to get community hours. I mean.
Do we have any more questions? Pastor Samper, over.
Over now.
One more, one more. Lisa, okay.
We'll, we'll talk to the property tax. We, we talked about the ninety-one percent that has been collected. Uh, historically, it's been ninety-six, seven, eight. On this recent drop, are these frequent flyers, are these people that officially are not paying their taxes?
I can't answer that question. This is my first year here. I don't know what we did last year. But I, what I'm listening to is this, ninety percent or better this time of year isn't that bad because you, you do have about ten percent of people who officially pay less. So I fully expect it to be closer to the ninety-five, ninety-six, hopefully ninety-seven percent by June because the county's still gonna be collecting. Uh, I was really concerned when it was only fifty percent last month, up to ninety, that's probably about more. So I expect it to be better by the end of the year. We got five more months to collect this. And people have to pay by March first in order to not get your name published in the paper for the length of taxes. So you will see another kind of, uh, rush to pay, keep your name out of the paper about the middle of February. Okay?
Do you know what that January thirty-first property tax deadline is?
January thirty.
Yeah, they put something out saying the property tax deadline was the, was January thirty-first.
The deadline without penalty is January sixth. Okay? On January thirty-first or February first, you have to report to these Department of Revenue a form called a T R two, uh, municipal or county certification. That is the form that tells the Department of Revenue what your property tax levy is and that is the number that they use to divide up your sales tax next year.
Okay.
That reports to you February one.
Are there any other questions from Samper? All right, we will now move on to our updates. Um, so we have, if you've driven north of, we're at Little Largie, see that we've got a nice tall structure sitting at Mendel Park. Uh, so our playgrounds are, the upgrades are starting. Um, hopefully we'll see that completed within the next few weeks, uh, which is a really good thing. We also, um, have a lot of, of cleaning and upgrades that happened at Philside Cemetery. So, um, Representative Coleman, um, in his private business, they actually worked with the county to get that casket that was hanging out inside. It is now in its new home, that's its new place, uh, solidly in the ground. If you wanna kinda go through the pictures, they sent us some pictures of the process that's about before and after, or after and before with the way that it's up there. Uh, but they've moved and relocated that, um, grave or that, the two, casket and now it is safe and sound. Um, so this, it's actually labeled now, they don't know who it is. Um, they predict that, or estimate that the casket's from the early seventies, late sixties. Um, but they marked it, um, so I think that's a really good thing. It's something that the community wanted. We've been trying to work with the community for a long time to get that taken care of. So I wanted to make sure that we express our gratitude to Mr. Royal Graham, to Mike Coleman, um, to the Cumberland County Commissioners and to definitely Amy Zion for taking this on and making sure that, um, that resting place is secure for the remains of those people who are there. Um, we also have entered into a new marketing contract with CGI Digital. Uh, and this is our, um, press release per se, so I'll let Carly go ahead and play that. I don't want your feedback, okay?
Hello, I'm Mayor P M. And I'm excited to announce that we have teamed up with CGI Digital to deliver an incredible new program. CGI's platform, hello nation, works to spotlight associations like ours with professional videos throughout our website. They get the word out to as many experts and influencers as possible so that our members and clients can see and support our community. For many businesses, getting noticed online and utilizing videos dramatically improves their digital presence. If you have a chance, find out what this program can do to you. And be sure to check out our videos when they come out.
Yay! Uh, but this is, uh, on our social media site. So if you'd like to share it to kinda let the community know that there will be more videos coming out starring Chief German, Mayor President Cooper, Commissioner Posios, um, Chief Williams. We might make John do a cameo in there. He's, he's. We might make John do a cameo in there, he's, he's, I'm just saying off screen. Uh, but there is more marketing and advertising coming, so that we can showcase the goodness and the amazing things that are happening in our community. Um, so please stay connected to our social sites, it'll be posted on our website as well. Um, I did want to recognize one of our citizens. Um, the pastor of, um, Evangelical House of God was awarded one of the highest, um, recognitions from our governor. She was honored with the Longleaf Pine Award. Uh, again, that is the highest designation from the governor. Um, she's now counted among the ranks with Oprah Winfrey and Katie Rogers, um, and of most of other, you know, notable people. And that's someone right here from our community, uh, that is now recognized for making changes throughout our state, and I think that is a, something that we all should be proud of, that we've now got our own hometown hero that's been recognized by our governor. Oh, I'm sorry, Apostle Troy. Yes, Apostle Troy at, um, Evangelical House of God, it's right down the street, it's right on Main Street. Um, I would also like to recognize our Mayor Prosser, who was appointed to the Small Cities Council for the National League of Cities again, so congratulations. Mayor Prosser is always involved in organizations outside of our community. Um, she has a very, very strong network, uh, with government officials across this nation, uh, and her wealth of resources and her network's reach has been beneficial to our, um, our board commissioners, to our staff, and to our community, so thank you, uh, for all you do for us. Oh, so, uh, we have, um, a minimum housing board that needs two members. Uh, you've heard us talk about how many, how many code enforcement issues we're facing, and now we're, um, we're actually pursuing those cases, and they're going to our minimum housing board. The minimum housing board is established to make sure that our houses are livable, that they're maintaining the proper, um, standards, meaning regulations and requirements based on our policies or visits and general statutes. Uh, and so we have now a plethora of minimum housing cases, again, because our code enforcement is being ramped up, uh, thanks to our force multipliers, our police department, who are now, um, watching in zones what's happening. Uh, so just know that we've got multiple eyes on our community, and shows, uh, with the record of minimum housing. Uh, I don't know if you guys have seen the digital, the digital agenda that has the, the list of minimum housing and code enforcement reports, but you can see the colors from here, these are all, the red is all open. And we've got about fourteen, thirteen, fourteen minimum housing cases. And so those will be coming before the minimum housing board, with some quality judicial board. Um, and so we need to fill two vacancies. Um, if you are interested in serving on this committee, please, um, fill out the application and send it in to Ms. Carly Autry, and we will get you a, we'll get you on our minimum housing, uh, committee. Again, this is a very, very, very important committee. Um, the rulings from this committee are held upheld by court of law. Um, so, and this is, again, what's going to help us address the blight, uh, and dilapidation of these houses and buildings in our community. I, I believe that is all I have.
Lunch.
Lunch with the, I don't always forget lunch with the mayor. It's one of my favorite things to do. I don't know what it is, but I know it's at Armor Tacos. Wednesday, this Wednesday at noon. Wednesday at noon at Armor Tacos. It's on my calendar, I make sure I check my calendar before I go to bed. Uh, so please come out and join us at Armor Tacos, their tacos are nominal. Um, and that is all I have now.
Mayor Prosser?
Um, the only thing I have is that, uh, I did one thing to National League of Cities, Small Cities Council, because it was through my membership with Small Cities, that we were able to do these videos with CGI. So, like, if you want to publicly, publicly thank them, um, the National League of Cities and all of Small Cities, thank them. And, um, I hope you all will watch them, and, uh, I am, I believe we have spots for some nonprofits as well, and community members, and some churches in the community. So, just reach out to, uh, us, and we'll get you in touch with the other people, okay? Thank you.
Commissioner Placios?
The only thing I have is that this past Saturday, the mayor and I attended the San Gil's, uh, Heritage Association, it was, uh, twenty-three years, twenty-three years that they used to, um, celebrate, that they've been operated, so if anybody wants to be a part of that organization, it's like twenty-five dollars a year, or you can come out and volunteer. They have different, um, events and stuff that you can volunteer for, and they also have, um, coming up in March, I think, they have the, the, um, farmer's market, we'll start during the spring, spring or something like, so. There's a lot, thank you.
Press your challenge?
Mayor, you know I always got something, I only got a little bit tonight. So, talking about the Military Veterans Veterans Advisory Committee, we have a meeting tomorrow night, six-thirty, right here in this room. We do have two vacancies for, for this committee, so if we've got anybody that's interested in serving in this. But more so, the public is invited, you don't have to be just military, you don't have to be just a retired. Anybody can come to these meetings, it's open to the general public. These are things that, that we discuss on ways to improve our military and our Veterans Affairs community that we have here. So, you know, come out, participate, look, listen, see something, say something, do something. So, come on out to that. But along those same lines, this Saturday, we're going to have cleanup, eight o'clock. So, we will be going back out into, into streets and the areas, so if, again, you would like your community cleaned up, and you're willing to come out and help and do that, we'll be glad to come out and start working in your areas, uh, other than just the areas that will get filled up and identified to be, to be cleaned up. And Mayor, last year we did our military banner program, we're getting ready to kick it off, we're a little bit late on it this year, but last year we threw, we had thirty-two banners that were flown over on Main Street. This year, we're looking to increase those numbers. So, if you would like to honor a loved one who served in the military, and have that banner flown on Main Street, we would be glad to assist you with that, getting the necessary documents, getting the, the pictures, so that your banner can be done. Those that already have banners, that, that took them back home, clean them up, you can be able to bring those back, we're going to fly those banners from Armed Forces Day, which is May seventeenth, through Veterans Day. So, again, we'll have a, a huge military presence of, of banners being flown on, on Main Street. And lastly, I'd like to commend our, our town manager for the hard work that's been done on Veterans Park. If you haven't noticed, the last few years, we went from the disease trees that were out there, that, that you didn't know were going to fall on you as, as you drove by, to now we've got nice sod out there, it's brown, but it's going to be green. Uh, we've got a nice gazebo that's out there, and by, by Memorial Day, when we have our, our Memorial Day, our annual Memorial Day ceremony, by that time, Veterans Park should be just about finished. So, that's something that Mr. Rory has, has, uh, listened to me, and, and more so a while, to get this going, and it is starting to really look beautiful. So, uh, he is to be commended for the hard work that he's done. We've got a, a stone that's going to be coming out there identifying that it is Spring Lake's Veterans Park. So, one thing's been missed, ever, in that park. So, uh, that's the four things that I got, Mayor, thanks.
Okay, awesome, I, I want to make sure we highlight that military banner program. We were the talk of the county when those banners went up. I had so many people reach out and say, I want a banner, I want a banner. So, I, uh, predict that will, will double, or if not triple, those numbers, because when those banners went up, you're pretty, yes. And that's what we want, but we want to showcase our military, so spread the word, the, the program is coming back. Make sure we advertise it, so nobody will feel like they were left out.
Commissioner Placios?
Thank you, yeah, and I know that your dream is that when we run out of holes on Main Street, we're going to be spreading that out to the rest of this town. And when everybody else sees that, we'll have even more beyond the world.
That's right, right.
Uh, and so our parents committee, we have four members here tonight, which is pretty cool. So, uh, I love that, and, um, we've been doing a lot of work, and one of those initiatives is Adopt a Street. And, you know, some emails went out today, Carly's working on those signs, and they look pretty good. And, uh, and so we have two organizations that have adopted a street, that are, their signs are getting prepared. And that is, of course, the Sports Academy, which we talked about at the last meeting, and the Five Days of Sigmas, who had purchased their sign a couple of years ago, that kind of got lost, you know? And so, uh, but we haven't forgotten, and so they will be honored and recognized for their contribution. They've been cleaning up without a sign. So, uh, anyway, if anybody else that is interested in adopting a street in town, you are welcome. It's a hundred dollars, and we will be looking at increasing that, that's coming directly from me, because those costs actually are through the roof right now for those signs, so it can be put out there. So, anyway, we thank you for your willingness to help clean up our town. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Rory, I'm ready. Let's go. Let's go.
As is my history so far, um, Jimmy was invited to the floor to talk about the budget amendment, and then talk about, uh, our AdLore tax collection percentages, and the revenue stream associated with our sanitation, and the parents commission to, to, to. Uh, I think it's important to recognize why that happens tonight. And so then it led to questions in regards to, uh, the timing, the budget timing, what's going on. Um, we will begin our budget process February the first. Alright, so I want you to keep a couple of things in mind, okay? Our budget process is going to begin with the safety, the police department and the fire department. Not public works, not utilities, but the police department and the fire department. Because those two departments are the largest departments in the general fund, period. So, we have to focus on those areas, because it's the give and take, um, associated with how do we fund those operations. And of the general fund, the two main revenue sources for the general fund are the property tax AdLore, and second, the sales tax revenue. So, you've heard about both of those conversations today. So, if you make an assumption that we start our budget February the first, which by the way is next week, right? And so what are we going to base our AdLore property taxes on? Our hope that we get ninety-five, ninety-six, or ninety-seven percent? Or our current reality of ninety-one percent? The, we're going to probably base it somewhere in the middle of that. You know, we're not going to take and say, okay, we're not going to get anything else. We're, we're, we know, we get that, we know it's going to go up. But the question that I asked was, well, what was our current budget on this year? And then what's it going to be next year? So, it doesn't matter what our current budget is here, it's based on what we're going to collect going forward. So, if we collect only ninety-five percent, and this year it's ninety-seven percent in AdLore, you can see where I got to do a two percent reduction in property tax for those purposes. That is driven by statute, not because I just want to make money up, okay? It's driven by state statute. And when you don't do that, that's what gets you in trouble, when you start dancing around the margins with the numbers. So, um, I'm always going to be kind of conservative in terms of how we estimate what those revenues are, and if it comes in higher than that, good, but I'm not going to try to run it up there. The second piece of that is the sales tax. We've had multiple conversations about the, the redistribution of the sales tax revenue. And so, um, we still stand to lose, um, an estimated eight hundred thousand to one point four million dollars in sales tax revenue. At the eight hundred thousand dollar mark, I got to figure out how to create revenue equal to eight hundred thousand for basically twenty cents on our tax rate. Or I've got to make expense cuts equivalent to twenty cents on our tax rate, or eight hundred thousand dollars. I cannot expand a program, whether it is litter control, Adopt a Street, and I'm picking on those because we had the conversations, I don't need to be mean on them. We can't expand any program unless we have a clearly identified revenue, sustainable revenue source, or clearly identified expense cuts. That is overly simplified, but it's really that simple. We've got to have ongoing revenues or expense cuts. So, any conversations about expanding the program, um, are at a loss right now, when I'm staring down the barrel of an eight hundred and one point four million dollar loss. Each one cent on our property tax generates forty-one thousand dollars. I can't see spending one cent on expanding the program when I am, uh, have essentially frozen six positions in the police department, six positions in the fire department. So, I, I can't say, well, I'm going to spend another, of one cent there on recreation, because I've frozen six positions in the police department, six positions in the fire department. I just can't do it, alright, that is not an appropriate conversation. And so I'm going to keep that at the forefront, I'm going to keep that, so that everybody hears it going forward, I'm going to repeat it over and over again. A case in point is that, um, I have two goals in the next budget year. We've been going through and having a discussion in regards to our strategic plan. And so far, it looks like the two top priorities, the two top priorities is investment in our infrastructure, and a lot of different ways of having, uh, discussions about that. Investment in our infrastructure, i.e. water and sewer. Uh, and two, code enforcement. Um, if we do not do something to halt urban life in this community, this will not be a community. It's period. It's invest in that water and sewer, you got to make the bill, you got to make sure that that water runs and sewer goes where it needs to, and you got to stop these, uh, tards and these buildings falling down. All they're doing is dragging down the entire tax assets. If we do not stop this urban life, we will not be, by any definition, a town. That's, that's my prediction, that's the pessimist in me. Um, so, it leads us to these other conversations, so I'm going to give you a case in point right now, that there are, when it comes to things like grants. Carly, as our IT director. Uh, I, it's a little funny there, but, uh, Carly is our IT director. We've been working with a group about trying to access a plant for cybersecurity for the town of Spring Lake. Now, if you recognize, if you watch your emails every once in a while, we'll get an email, hey, this is Somnia, can you move money from my account to this account? Well, we know that that's not Somnia, right? We, we pick up on that. Uh, or I'll get emails from Renee Robinson at such and such UK. That's not Renee Robinson. Those things, that, those are people who penetrate our firewall, penetrate our security, and they're trying to get into our system, and so we see that, and we know that. So, we have, uh, the ability, this is the struggle that I have, is that we currently pay twelve thousand dollars a year. Now, let me repeat that. We currently pay twelve thousand dollars a year for IT services. Um, with that twelve thousand, we get this, that, and the other thing. And among that are some changes that we've done to our network, our cybersecurity, things of this people, software. Um, I actually, when this grant come available, I said, okay, let's explore the opportunity to outsource our IT services beyond what Carly does and our current outsourced contractor does, to get something that's more profitable and work, uh, equivalent to where we need to be as a town, as a city, uh, of the future, not what we've been in the past. The cost to do so is that even if we were, we got the grant, the grant would cap us at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars over three years. And we would be responsible for matching that at thirty percent, and the grant will pay seventy percent, okay? You tracking me? Even after all of that is said and done, our cost of outsourced will be equivalent to around ten thousand dollars a month, or a hundred twenty thousand dollars a year, or three cents on our tax rate. That's the bottom line, okay? We can think about all these wonderful things that we want to do, alright? Um, and I would love to do it. Um, but, at the end of the day, the very existence of being a town means spending what dollars we have wisely, investing in our infrastructure, alright, so that we can maintain the water sewer systems, trying to control, contain urban life to include minimal housing, to include litter, to include illegal dumping, all of these things that we see occurring all over the town, that just drag down and make our town look bad. Alright, make our town look bad. And I don't care if it floods roads or, it's everywhere, but zone, there is no, there's no perfect zone. It's everywhere, it's your neighbor, um, it's right across the street, it's Main Street, it's Bragg Boulevard. I don't want to be Saint Jude, you know, the patron saint of lost causes. But at the end of the day, we have to be very, very focused on what we're going to do to move forward. And that in and of itself is a big piece of the puzzle. So I can't see us trying to increase our IT services and go forward with a hundred and twenty thousand dollar a year expense even after we're getting the grant dollars. Then the, the, the grant goes away in three years and now we're going to be housing all of that expense. Not even some of them being shared grant. It may sound good, but it's not real. And I want to make sure we're all focused on what is reality. Hope is not a tactic. We have a reality that we have to deal with and we can say anything that we want to all the time. But we can't do anything without a sustainable revenue source or clearly identified expense cuts. And that takes me to another point on the sales tax. When we lose eight hundred to one point four million dollars on the sales tax revenue, we've already authorized, the county and Fed bill, to tax our residents five cents for recreation. That generates roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for them to operate the recreation. They do not, alright, they do not use that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to pay the hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar debt service on that recreation. We still pay for that out of the general fund. So now all of a sudden, now if you do the back, that's three point three cents every year going to the debt service for that recreation. How can we upgrade the recreation center? Well, we're not even operating the recreation center and we're continuing to pay debt service on it at hundred and thirty-six. I don't know what that means. And I'm staring down the barrel of an eight hundred thousand to one point four million dollar loss. We don't make money. Y'all come up and wait. I'm all in, I'm all in, we'll figure out how to make money. But I want to keep that message at the forefront. And so from here on out, I want to say it, say it, say it, say it. Because hopefully people will begin to understand what it is. It's not about LGC, it's not, it's about where we're at. We have a lowest value tax digest, the highest tax rate in the county. Because we have the lowest value tax digest. We have to grow the tax debt digest to take advantage of economies of scale by outsourcing abilities at different things or we simply have to raise the tax rate. That's where we're at. We can't continue to do what we've been doing at the current tax rate without making some substantial cuts. And that's going to be program cost, not personnel cost. We're going to be thinking about, should we be doing it certain levels? Should we keep doing this? We're not in business to do this. Why are we doing this? What should we be doing? So stay tuned, next meeting, I have a similar report. I just have more tax dollars we can collect or haven't collected. We're measuring that two weeks' difference to know what it's going to be. Because when we have our next meeting, we've already had our briefings with police and fire, we've covered everybody. They've already identified, the police department, chief is here right now. They've already identified over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of cuts in their budget. For next year, you know where they're at? Personnel, it's worse down than it. And so how do you continue to be public safety oriented and, you know, patrol or police the community? And you continue to reduce your staffing? You can't do so much. And you've got to be very, very aware of that. And that's, that's the struggle. It doesn't matter to me if it's police, fire, or public works or who. We've got to be focused on trying to do it. How do I enforce minimal housing, though? They have no building inspector. I don't really have a planning department to outsource that to the county. Their focus is on just looking at subject visions, not really focusing on minimal housing. They can't see the block from there out. There they will. We see it from ours, right? So with that, I will hush, but I would like to follow up with the two Commissioner Lackman's comments in regards to Veterans Park. grammatically incorrect, it ain't me. It ain't me. They go by the name of Damo, Chuck, Jimmy, Harold. It's our entire team of Spring Lake employees. Carley, who did I forget? Sutton, everybody here. Everyone, everybody in here tonight has been on that Veterans Park project, making it a reality. So it ain't me. It's them. And that means you. That means you to be here. I'll leave it at that.
Do you guys see what we have to face? It's not that we don't want all of the golden alleys and we have to, we have to put out the fire, assess the remains and then rebuild. That no developer wants to bring a golden alley to a town that looks like it's ran down and dirty. Nobody wants to bring those businesses here. We can't keep our streets clean or our pitches trimmed. So we have to start at ground zero and that means we have to clean up first. We have to become attractive to give these amenities in. Mr. Rory?
Everything I have is for closed session.
Alright, well, with that segue. I'm going to take a motion to go into closed session for showing the NCGS 143, 318, 11A4 Economic Development and NCGS 143, 318, 11A2 Regarding Client Privileges. Commissioner Chadwick, Mayor Plonton, in discussion. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you all for coming out of the nine year, now we call it a session.
Action was taken. Uh, Mayor R. Titts. Commissioner Thompson.
I say.